All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 7th, 2019, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. Laurie, would you please call the roll?
Hutske.
Here.
Bastian.
Here.
Bauer.
Here.
Hiding.
Here.
Burton.
Here.
Nurseinger.
Here.
Sangster.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Waishar.
Here.
Great.
Who are you gonna sit here?
Here.
For the record.
All right, we got minutes from the October 24th work session.
Review, motion to approve.
You practiced that.
Thank you.
All day. That's why I was late.
Hutske.
Hi.
Bastian.
Hi.
Burton.
Hi.
Bauer.
Hi.
Hiding.
Hi. All right, Zach, would you like to review our table items, please?
One thing, we have one table item on the agenda this evening. It's for Panorama Park Lot 1. And let's think about this. So, not any major significant updates to this right now. One thing I did want to bring to your attention is that we got some details on the proposed retaining wall for that back corner. It was just something we hadn't seen yet, so I just wanted to show you what that looks like. And so this is a cut sheet of the product. So what would be back there? Obviously earth tone in nature, and then here's a profile of what it would look like from its profile section there at that back corner.
About 10 feet.
Yeah. 10 feet, top to bottom of that material that you just saw on the previous sheet. Any questions or concerns with that?
Is there any fencing that would be at the top? Could anybody get to the top of that from the other side?
Um, I don't believe so.
Or at least a curbing?
It would be, I mean, that profile showed a little curbing at the top of it.
Probably a capstone or something above the top, I would imagine.
So I saw a note, either Mark's or Mike's, about drainage.
Yes.
There.
And Mark had just looked at that on the plans recently, and in reviewing what's out there during the site walks, and since they've got more check dams in place now, those drainage concerns have been mediated pretty much, mitigated.
Kind of soil we're dealing with?
It's sand.
Yeah. You're right against the crease.
No expansive material.
But what they have in there right now as proposed, and what's installed now, Mark was pretty satisfied with what was being shown in the plans.
Yeah, I just saw that PRC comment.
Yeah. And Mark and I talked about that, I think on Tuesday, we were talking about that. So Bob, that's a good question. I'll just, we can clarify with that to make sure everything that needs to be there, if a fence or some marking of some sort needs to be there, to just identify that this is a 10-foot drop coming up.
Right.
Yeah, but it's pretty steep.
Getting there.
Leading to it.
Yeah.
So.
On the other side? On the?
On the uphill side.
Yeah, I don't recall us ever having to do that for a project, but we'll make sure we have everything called compliant.
That's...
The other item was that I just wanted to revisit this with the board. On the landscaping up on that hill, I know AJ and Terry were at the site walk that took place. I didn't know if you guys wanted to revisit that, the landscape plan that you've seen, if you had any questions, or if you just wanted to defer the final details to the landscape consultant as we previously agreed.
Well, I saw that note, he's looking for more.
That's on what?
Two, though.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, right, right.
No, I think, I mean, he was at the site walk as well, and, you know, we discussed some things, so.
Okay.
I think he has it pretty well on hand.
Okay.
Mike, what do you think, Terry?
Yeah, I'm comfortable waiting for Bruce's comments.
Well, are you comfortable with him reviewing it as a pre-milar item, as we previously discussed?
It's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
So with that being said, we've talked about all aspects of the project. We've seen how the project revised as it's gone along to reduce their encroachment into the buffer setback. Again, that's an item that's going to be on the zoning board agendas application two weeks from now. They have shown land bank parking, and Doug maybe can show that again on their site plan. They've shown sufficient parking through land banking parking to meet the code for the minimum number of required spaces on the lot. Therefore, they no longer need an area variance for that. They're only looking at the buffer setback. And for that, it was originally a 50-foot request. It's now 35 feet, so they've reduced it by 15 by pulling parking out of that corner by the retaining wall where Doug has the cursor, and relocating that on the site. So again, that's going to fall back to the zoning board in two weeks for their final review.
Right.
We've done architecture, we've talked about the use, we've talked about the landscaping, the drainage, we've talked about the lighting. I've covered all the bases on this one. I haven't heard any more.
Have you got any other?
Warming concerns? And we prepare to draft approval resolution for your consideration in advance of this meeting. Are there any questions about that document?
No. Good.
All right. Do we want to entertain a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Hutske.
Hi.
Bastian.
Hi.
Burton.
Hi.
Bauer.
Hi.
Hiding.
Hi.
Okay.
That's great. One quick update on one of your held items, doesn't require any action, but regarding the heritage protection daycare application, they did send us another letter requesting that it be held by this board as they are gathering information to present to the zoning board following its recent decision. So I just wanted to inform you of that, but it requires no action on your part this evening. Other than that, we have two public hearing items tonight, and those will be discussed at 7:00. And we have nothing else to discuss in the work session.
All right.
Anybody bring donuts?
With that information, we will recess until 7:00, and we'll reconvene upon the bias for the public hearing. Everyone, and welcome to the November 7th, 2019, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in heaven, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
All right, thank you, everyone, for coming. We have two items on our agenda this evening, and the way our process works is the, if you're not familiar, the applicant will present their project to the planning board. We will ask questions of the applicant, and then we'll open up for public comment. There are some slips of paper on the back table there. If you'd like to speak, you can either fill one of these out, and I will read through them and call your name to speak, or it's not a super big crowd, so just raise your hand and I'll call you up. And when you're asked to come up and speak, please go to the podium and address your comments to the board, state your name and address for the record, and then say whatever you want to say. So with that, Zach, would you please read the first item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application number one, BME Associates, 10 Lift Bridge Lane East, Fairport, New York, 14450, on behalf of 777 Panorama Properties LLC. Request under Chapter 250, Articles 11-11.2 and 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for final subdivision and site plan approval for the construction of a two-story building with associated site improvements on a new 2.8-acre lot to be known as Lot 2 for Building B as part of the overall development known as Panorama Park, consisting of 55 acres of land at 125 Panorama Creek Drive. Properties now are formerly owned by 777 Panorama Properties LLC and Zoned LI, application number 19P-0025, SBL number 138.12-1.111.
All ears, Mike.
Thanks. Evening. I'm Mike Bogajewski with BME Associates. We're here representing 777 Panorama Properties. With me is Rich and John Lefroy, who I know you guys are all familiar with. We're here tonight to request final site and subdivision approval for the second lot within Panorama Park, the business park, for this is called Sumitec. The building itself is 14,000 square feet approximately, mainly office space with some shop space located on the east side. The building itself is proposed to be two stories for a portion of it. The, as you can see in the rendering, the western half is single-story. Height of the building is mainly 28 feet to that second-story parapet, but the entrance portion does have one small area that's 31 feet high to the top of that parapet at that entrance area. Like I mentioned, this is the second lot now to be proposed to be developed within the overall Panorama Business Park. Just a quick background, since I know you guys are all familiar with it, the overall approvals were granted back in June for a total of 350,000 square feet of building space. At that time, the seeker negative declaration was granted, and that set the development thresholds for as these lots get developed. Since this is only the second lot, we're well below those building square footage thresholds, traffic trip gen thresholds, which we outlined in the engineer's report that was submitted. This lot is proposed to be 2.8 acres, and it's located basically at the lower portion of the site. I know you guys are all familiar, fairly familiar with the overall Panorama Park at this point. The Lot 1 that we talked about earlier was at the, what we call like the top of the hill. This one would be as you enter the site, before the road climbs up the hill, would be on your left side, more towards the northern end of that property. The site itself will have access from two entrances onto Parker Hill Drive, the main road through the business park. Like I mentioned, the building is roughly 14,000 square feet. We are proposing 42 spaces to be built at this time. We have land banked some spaces since the Sumitec company, according to Rich and John, they don't have that many employees for the building and parking requirements. We did confirm with town staff that 84 parking spaces are required per code. We're proposing the 42 to meet the demands of the building user, but, and then proposing to land bank the rest of them so they can be constructed later on. We did receive comment from Zach yesterday, yesterday afternoon, that there was some concern through PRC review by the board with the layout of the land bank parking on the rear, basically the rear sides of the building. So we did submit a revised site plan today with a revised land bank parking area. The goal of that was to relocate some of the land bank parking just so it didn't encroach into that steep slope area to the rear of the building as much. That was one of the concerns that Zach made us aware of, so we wanted to address that comment, submit a revised site plan to you guys, and show that we're able to propose the land bank parking via like an alternate layout that doesn't encroach to the rear of the building, doesn't encroach to that EPod steep slope area, and would allow that land bank parking to be built in the future as needed without having to build, to encroach into that steep slope, steep slope area as much. We did receive PRC comments that we've addressed with revised plans and response letter. We did receive some additional landscape comments from the town's landscape consultant today. Two comments that will, I don't think that we'll have any problem addressing on the revised plans that we'll submit for review by the town. I think we've tried to address all the comments that we've received to date, but if there's any other additional comments, concerns by the board, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
It appears that there's not pavement going all the way around the building. Is that okay with the fire marshal?
We did, I followed up with the fire marshal today. He's okay with it, just because the building is sprinkled, and Rich did confirm with the fire marshal that building is to be sprinkled, so the fire marshal is okay with the access around the, around the two sides of the building because it's sprinkled.
Okay. And you mentioned 14,000 square feet. Is it 14,000 total, or 14,000 sort of per floor, and the second floor might be a little smaller?
14,000 total. The second floor is basically, it's like a mezzanine, and then the, there's some, like a small shop space area that is two stories, open to two stories, basically.
I see. All right. And can you possibly graphically go over that parking, the land bank, how it changed for us?
So, on the current, sure. On the current, basically on the submitted site plans, we had, we had the parking to be extended on the west side of the building, and then the parking on the east side to be extended basically towards the rear of the building, towards the, towards the south. That would have pushed that parking and retaining wall to be built into that, into that slope area, which was, which was one of the concerns that Zach had brought up to us yesterday. So what we did, what we did as of, as of today, actually, what we did as of today, actually, was on the west side, we pulled some of that parking, proposed land bank parking back, so that way it's within the limits.
Pulled it back, meaning forward.
To the north, towards the front of the building.
To the front yard.
Yep. Basically decreased some of the.
Away from the hill.
Decreased some of the parking spaces that were shown to be land banked on that west side.
Mm-hmm.
And that decreased the encroachment into that slope wooded EPod area that would have been necessary to construct a land bank parking. By decreasing some of the parking on that west side, if and when it were to be built, it could be built within the current clearing limits that were approved per the overall preliminary plans, basically. So we tried to maintain proposed land bank parking within that approved clearing limit, so we're not encroaching beyond that with, with the new parking. So on the east side of the building, we did the same thing. We removed that parking from the, that extended past the rear of the building that would have required a new additional retaining wall to be built and encroach into the EPod area some more. So we removed some of that, and then extended the land bank parking to the east, so that way we're, we're meeting the 84 required parking spaces total if they were to be built in the future. By extending it to the east, the, currently we have a birotentionary there, but we, we checked in with Zach and the town engineer today, and they seemed okay with providing an easement on the remaining lands, so that way if the parking were to be built, the birotentionary would have to get relocated. But that could be incorporated also by combining birotentionaries and future green infrastructure practices with future development on the remaining site, so hopefully that helps to clarify if you need more explanation.
Yes, yes, thanks. I had another question that was very important, but it escapes me at the moment. So you'll, anybody else have?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Some questions?
Yeah, I have some questions for the sponsor.
Remember Mike.
You want to come up, please?
Sure.
So, you can't see it, but I have on my screen the rendering that you presented for Lot 1. And of course, we're looking at the rendering for Lot 2 here.
Yep.
Architecturally, they're, they're not very compatible. Was it your intent that, that you would carry some kind of an architectural theme through these, through the project? Or is it your intention to, to allow your clients to dictate their own architectural flavor without regard to a theme?
So what we, what we trying to do is to answer your question. We're trying to make a theme, but not make every building the same color and exactly the same. So if you look, this basically has ribbon windows, this has ribbon windows. We've kind of used the same product, this is Show Nice product. So on, on the building on the top.
Hey, Rich, do you mind introducing yourself? What's your name and address, just for the record?
Excuse me. I'm Rich Lefroyce, the contractor and developer of the project.
Thank you.
So the, this thing's heavy, so I'm gonna stand it up here. The, the top building is basically using the Show Nice product here, which is basically a 12 by 16 plaque. This one, we're gonna go basically the same, except a little difference in tone is going more lighter, so for all purposes, we're using the same products.
So perhaps we're losing something in the color resolution between the two renderings, the glossy renderings that you have up there? And the reason that I ask is, you know, typically when there's a question that, you know, that the board has with respect to architectural continuity or compatibility with, within the town, then we ask our architectural consultant to weigh in on that. And, you know, certainly very nice-looking buildings, and, but, you know, I'm just, I'm wondering out loud whether or not we should ask our consultant now to get involved so that we could, you know, kind of establish something so that, you know, when the next application comes in on the next building, if, if that client of yours has a completely different approach and a different color scheme, you know, we, we can kind of direct that in a certain way.
What I'm, what I've, what I've learned about, we got a pretty good-sized development order by Cloughins Road. Basically, the buildings are the same and are all with the same color. And you drive in there, and to be honest with you, it's kind of boring, okay? So we're trying to keep sort of the same look, but maybe have, you know, different, and again, we don't want to have anything that's, you know, bright yellow or bright orange or something like that, but still have, you know, kind of, I don't know, I would call it, you know, comfortable color scheme there, but yet have the buildings have a little their own character.
Are you using your own design team for these projects, or are your clients bringing in their own?
No, we're using our own design team.
Okay.
And that's, that's kind of why I'm trying to, like, these, so the idea here, where this had a beige or stucco here, we're going with a pair of grays, which, you know, this will be a darker gray on the top, and then a lighter gray here with the Show Nice will basically go here and up. And admittedly, printers are great, okay? But when you print some of the colors, they don't probably look as.
That's why, that's why I'm asking.
That's right. It's good. If you look at it, I mean, this probably in the rendering, and if you look at that, you know, this is a lot lighter, but we have tried to print that a bunch of times.
It's even, it's lighter in the, in the ones that you submitted to the board.
Yeah, we tried to put it on a glossy paper.
And of course, on Lot 1, that looks more like a, like a beige.
Yeah. Well, that's why I say, I mean, the black on the bottom here, and the black on the bottom here, this is, I call it whiner, or whiner, you know, because we're trying to go with, you know, lighter tones of gray, and here we're trying to go with tones of beige. But the goal will be is to try to have some sort of a theme through the park, which we have ribbon windows and, and a lot of light, you know, everybody wants windows today.
Okay. So next question. What are we doing about building signage?
Building signage? I don't address that at this point because it seems like every town wants something different. Generally speaking, not to say, we only need signage for identification. This is going to be a leased building. I typically don't let signage. If I have one tenant that's running the whole building, I might let him have a piece of signage here. But generally, this isn't like a retail building. When people are coming up here, they basically know where they're going. And when I say that, we'll have a monument or something out here that'll have the number on it. And, you know, I've tried putting some names on there, and I really kind of find that to be kind of futile because you're driving your car up, you can't really read them. So we've found better to have numbers on here and allow people to put their names on the glass door.
So what about Lot 2? Because this is, this is dedicated to a specific client.
Yeah, I mean, they'll, they will have a piece of signage someplace, and that's why I wanted to kind of, what is a town desire? I mean, we're, we're pretty open, you know? I mean, I, I just, you know, people want identification to see where their building is.
Sure. And their logo, their brand, sure.
Right. But they're not, you know, it's not like somebody's gonna drive by here, and this happens to be a software company that's gonna say, oh, we need to pull into Sumitec and buy whatever, you know what I mean? So it's basically, like I said, we don't want some degree of signage, but it's not that we're, people driving down the road, I mean, we need to have, people need to find the place, UPS guy needs to find it and everything else, but we, we're not trying to advertise signage.
I'd like to address this, Zach, just in terms of area.
I mean, yeah, typically in these situations, if you haven't come up with your scheme yet, you'll provide something in a sign package to our building department, and we have limitations on max signage and one signage per side of the building. Or, I'm sorry, you're allowed one sign on the building on one side. There are a lot of monument sign as well, so as long as you have things that comply with the overall square footage of those signs requirements, you'll, you'll go through that process and then to the zoning board for anything greater.
We would go through, and we would get another sign permit, just like you're mentioning, and we would have the sign guy, you know, kind of do that.
That, which you want me to cover? Okay.
Thank you.
I remembered what my question was. It was about a loading dock. Is this on the southeast side of that, is there gonna be a loading dock?
So it's, it's not quite a loading dock, personally, right, Rich?
It's basically a garage door.
It's an overhead door.
Okay, so an at-grade overhead door?
Yep.
Do you foresee any, any deliveries, you know, I understand on a very infrequent basis, but on a regular basis of tractor-trailer type trucks, just from a navigation around the parking lot and turning around?
We spoke about that today, and they said if they get one a month, it's a lot. You know, they get UPS, they'll get FedEx, but, you know, anything of any size, if they get one a month, it'll be a lot.
Right.
And it's not, like I said, it's not like a typical loading dock where you'd have a tractor-trailer backing up to it. It's that overhead door on the side of the building for access.
Right, so if they have something like that, might have a forklift or a, and they can unload.
Correct.
Skids from the back.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Anybody else?
What's this company do?
Software engineering, I believe.
Software. How many employees do you think there'll be in there?
Roughly 26, I think. 24.
24. Now, they're gonna be the sole operation there, right?
Correct.
Are they buying the building?
That'd be a question for Rich, yeah.
Yes, yeah, they're, they're gonna be the owners of the building.
Okay.
Yeah. I agree with Jim, though. You gotta come up with something, anything for the, you know, not for the signage, I'm sorry, for the architecture on the building. sorry, for the architecture of the buildings, you know? Like to get that clear up.
We can discuss that in that works.
Yeah.
Sure.
But just to let you know.
Okay.
You brought up a good point there. And I think that's it for me. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
I noticed you have a 2,500 square foot lab for testing. What kind of lab space is that?
That was that shop space I mentioned inside.
Shop space or lab space, difference.
And...
What I'm going to do is I have the owners of the building, John, Katie, who are...
Sure.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
Thanks, everyone. Katie Lally, primary owner of Sumitex Group. So a component of our business is physical testing. So that space, we will occasionally bring, think, parts of things in to there, and we do testing for vibration, movement, that sort of thing on a particular item, like maybe a turbine blade or something of that nature. So it's very contained in that space, and that's really the primary use for it.
So like vibe tables in there or something?
I'm sorry?
Vibe tables, vibration tables for the components?
We don't do, and I'm sorry, I'm going to reference, but I have our chief engineer here who actually happens to be a resident in town, too. We don't do a lot of vibration, like vibration shock table testing, right?
Yeah, most of our...
Come on up.
You get to be on TV.
Yeah.
Hundreds of thousands of people watching.
Fan bases watching.
My name's Todd Nichols. I am a Penfield resident, as you can see by our field...
Right.
Yeah, so we do, the kind of testing we do is like, kind of like, non-destructive testing. So like, we have like these little itty-bitty hammers that will hit things with these, like, fine-tuned instruments. And then we put like fancy microphone-like things on them to measure, you know, inaudible mostly, like responses and things like that. Some strain gauging. There is, we do have some shakers, but they're mounted on like rubber pads, so they don't even like require special foundations or, you know, anything. They don't transmit any energy into the ground.
Okay, thanks.
And they're not the majority of our work either.
No, there's a small, small group of us that do that kind of work. And then most of us are desk jackies, running software.
Okay, thank you. Mike, I have a question for you. On the land bank...
Thank you.
The land bank parking goes right out to the property line. Is there a variance required for that?
I don't, there shouldn't be. There, there are no internal subacts, basically, with, with the ally zoning and the zoning throughout the development.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Not nearly. You're good? Any other questions from the board? All right. I'd like to thank you. I'd like to open it up to the audience. And first person, David Pearlman.
Hi, David Pearlman. I live at 62 Winding Creek Lane. I suspect that my, that there may be rules regarding noise generated outdoors or lighting and things of that sort, which I'm unfamiliar with, but I assume they exist. Is that correct? That whatever is done on land and is within a certain range of habitation would not exceed certain noise levels. Am I right there?
Penfield does have a noise ordinance. I don't have it right in front of me in certain hours of the day.
So they have, in other words, whatever is done on this, on this land would have to comply with those particular rules and regulations which are in place. What about lighting over the parking lots? I mean, I, many parking lots have tall poles with very bright lights, and that could be bothered some other, any rules and regulations on that?
We request, say, dark sky compliant, so lighting that has a, what's called a horizontal cutoff, so that it doesn't, it minimizes glare off-site. And with new light fixtures, most of the newer projects that are going in have dimming capabilities. So some of these will most likely have that feature as well. So at night, they'll either dim down to a lower level or turn off.
Okay, and there are LED lights now, for example, which can be...
Correct.
Very well focused and point downward instead of wasting power by lighting the sky.
Correct.
So there are rules that govern this.
Yeah, the town doesn't have a specific lighting ordinance, but we do review and pay attention to that.
It's also documented through the site plan approval process, such as this one, what type of lighting fixtures would be installed there, such as the dark sky compliant LED lighting with dimming controls. And then, David, I just wanted to speak to your questions about the noise ordinance. The intention of the noise ordinance is to govern over uses that are established under their normal operations and to, it really comes into play when it's creating anything that's unreasonably loud or is found to be unnecessary. So if something occurred that was consistently happening under its normal operations after this building's built, and we have concerns about that, then the ordinance gets kicked into effect. But as you heard, this is primarily an office use in this building. All their activities are internal. Really, what you're seeing is the, the come-and-go traffic of the vehicles for the employees back and forth to the, to the, to the building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Marlene Shattuck.
I guess, Marlene Shattuck, 59 Winding Creek Lane. I guess one of my questions would be what their owner now is going to be considering the normal hours of operation. Is this, will there be employees in the building 24 hours a day or restricted hours of operation? And is the lighting proposed? Because there's parking that can be in the back and on the sides, and then there's the front of the building. So do we have any idea at this point how much lighting there is going to be? Because sometimes when there's not lighting in the back of buildings, bad things happen. It gives opportunities to...
I think I can speak. There, there was a submitted lighting plan, and I believe there's three pole fixtures in the front and the sides, and then two building-mounted fixtures on the back.
Okay. And, and do we have any idea about the operation of the business as far as the hours that they will be?
We certainly can find that out.
Okay.
Sure, come on up. Sure.
Hi.
Hi, Katie.
Hi, Katie. Good to meet you. Katie Lally again. We're a regular, you know, sort of eight-to-five-ish business.
So you anticipate a single shift during the day?
Oh, yeah, there's definitely no shift. I mean, could somebody occasionally work late or be in early? Yes, but you were, were basically your general, you know, business working hours.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not expecting any tractor-trailers to be coming into this building, then? If this is just technical... ...operation?
It, they stated that, that it's not a regularly anticipated occurrence. Could it happen? Yes. And correct me if I'm wrong, but what was stated was that it would be a very, if, if a tractor-trailer needed to make a delivery or something, it would be a very infrequent thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the sign-ups we have. Would anyone else like to, yes, sir?
Bill Jones, I live at 66 Waterview Circle. A couple, hope straightforward questions. So you stated it was 14,000 square feet and 2,500 of lab and shop. So is the rest all office?
It's about 14,000 square feet. Okay.
Bill, make sure your questions are directed to the board.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Just so I, I want to confirm that the, they're building 42 spaces in Land Banking 42, is that correct?
That's the request, yes.
Okay, okay. And will any variances be required by this proposal?
Currently, there are none.
Okay. And does this encroach on the EPods that were originally on, put out at all?
Based on my review of the plans, there's a, probably a minor area that they do have to disturb for the retaining wall, but not a significant encroachment.
Okay, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Would anyone else like to speak to this application? Yes, come on up again. Sure.
I always worry a little bit about the word not significant or insignificant. That's not a number. It means one thing to one person and another thing to another. I'd feel a lot more comfortable if certain limits were actually put on the amount of encroachment that's considered reasonable, and what's reasonable to one is not reasonable to another. And it's best, I think, to get these things defined.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to speak to the application? All right, anyone else from the board have any additional comments? Thank you very much.
Is there any questions that you'd like us to address at this point? Or any additional questions?
We'll be tabling tonight with, you know, requests for probably some additional information.
Okay.
We'll, we typically wrap everything up in a work session at the end of the, once the public hearing's done, so you're welcome to...
Sure, sure.
Stick around for that if you'd like, or not, it's not that exciting, so...
No, thank you, thank you very much. Just wanted to double-check if you wanted anything else uncovered, but if that's not the case, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. And Zach, please read the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application number two, Lobello Associates, DPC, 300 State Street, Suite 201, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of Thomas Gangemi, request under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary final site plan approval for a parking expansion with associated site improvements on a 0.79 acre property located at 1549 Empire Boulevard. The property is now reformally owned by Thomas Gangemi and zoned LB. Application number 19P-0026, SBL number 093.19-01-004.
Hello, my name is Marcus Human, and here's my colleague, Daniel Brock, from Lobello Associates, here representing Thomas Gangemi for the project of the Children's Dyslexia Center of Rochester at the address of 1549 Empire Boulevard. We're here tonight requesting site plan approval. For this project, this project is across the street, is located on Empire Boulevard, across the street from Hill Haven, just to the south of the Avalon Apartments. This property is owned currently as limited business, and the change of use from residential to the Children's Dyslexia Center providing tutoring services to children with dyslexia has been, has been previously approved. To provide, to provide the additional parking, the parking needed for this site, we are proposing 15 additional sites to the west of the existing building in the rear of the property. This will serve the needs of the students, the staff, and other occupants in this facility. To handle the additional, or the install, or the proposed asphalt pavement, we are proposing a bioretention facility at the west end of, at the west end of the property, the west end of the proposed parking lot. This will help capture all the, all the stormwater that runs off the site in its current, in its current direction to, from east to sou, or east to west. Other than the proposed bioretention facility, we are not, we are not anticipating to propose any other utility improvements. To, to install the, to install the proposed bioretention facility, we will be, we will be clearing some of the vegetation on the west end of the property. At this time, I would like to open it up, open up the floor, or open up to the board for questions.
Okay.
Yeah, Mark, how long has this facility been open?
This facility is not yet open.
Oh, it's not open yet? Okay, so...
I believe, I believe Thomas is working on renovations now, preparing, preparing the facility.
All right. How many employees are they going to have? Students?
I apologize, I do not have that information on hand. I know Thomas and I, or Thomas and, and one of my other colleagues were speaking, who I believe Thomas is going to be here tonight. He couldn't make it. So I don't have that information with me tonight, but I can provide that to you before the next meeting.
So why are they seeking 15 additional parking spots? What do you have there right now?
So currently, the, the facility has, I believe it's six or seven spaces that were under, installed under one of the previous grading and fill permits that the Town of Penfield has granted Thomas, as well as the additional ADA space and, and asphalt area to the, to the east of the existing structure. Thomas came to us requesting that, requesting that we provide design services for the additional parking spaces to accommodate for the, the students and the staff that would be using this facility, as, as well as, to my understanding, there will, there's the potential of a shift change, and at that shift change, they would need the additional parking to make sure that there's no queuing out onto Empire Boulevard.
Where are they presently located, do you know?
I do not.
What, you going to need any variances?
To my knowledge, we do not need any variances. One, one thought that we were going back and forth on was depending on the 50-foot residential, the residential buffer off the northern property line, we went with this proposed design to stay away from that buffer, and I don't believe there's an intent, any needed variances for this, for this layout.
What's the hours of operation for this place, do you know?
I was hoping to have that information here tonight, and I don't have that on hand.
Okay. You took a look at the, any of the PRC comments? DOT's comments?
Yes, we have received those comments, and I believe Bob Steeler from my office had sent that information over to Zach earlier this afternoon as a response to the, as a response to the comments we received.
Probably need time to review that, though. All right, that's it for me right now. Thank you.
Can you describe the operation at all? Or you're not that, like, what does this facility do?
This building, or this establishment will provide tutoring services to the children with, to children with dyslexia. What types of tutoring, I do not know.
No, probably just help with schoolwork and getting through things. I mean, I would imagine...
That's, that's my understanding as well.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Is, is there lighting in the back parking lot? Additional lighting?
We're not proposing any site lighting, such as a new pole or any, any light or any structure that would be in the existing rear, rear of the lot. Any, any proposed, any proposed lighting will be... Any, any proposed, any proposed lighting will be building-mounted.
Okay.
At this time, we're, we're currently believing that it would be building-mounted.
Okay. Zach, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify for the board, and just kind of history that led to this application. The owner, as you guys kind of got into it, he came to us originally asking for a grade and fill permit to install and formalize this kind of, this temporary parking that is up front today that is, currently uses two curb cuts on Empire Boulevard. That was one of the comments that was brought up by the town engineer and the DOT and the DRC comments, which you guys have started to address. Not sure how much correspondence you've had with the DOT in terms of if they require anything more about that. Just the history on that is, that area up front was kind of always intended to be temporary in nature. It was pre-existing condition for the longest time. Right now, you have three curb cuts on Empire Boulevard, so it's, one of staff's recommendations to this project was trying to clean that up, and I know we expressed that to the owner early on, and I think that is something the town engineer has continued to put forth in the PRC memo. So that is something that I think will have to be addressed throughout this process, and it's something we'll have to talk to the owner about. But I wanted to make the board aware of that. That grade and fill permit was really designed to get them sufficient parking temporarily through the change of use that the zoning board reviewed earlier this year, which is that new ADA parking space in front of the building that you see, along with showing you can provide, I believe it's seven, six, or six or seven spaces up front, maybe six. I forgot how many got striped there, but that was the purpose of that review process early on. And now we're here to formalize a more permanent parking situation to service the use. So we just wanted to kind of get you guys caught up on that and get that on the record for everyone.
Okay. Anyone else from the board? Anyone in the audience like to comment on this application? Okay, seeing that there's nobody interested in speaking to it, thank you very much for your presentation. Thanks for coming. And we will call this hearing closed. Have a great night, everyone.
Review the Panorama Park application first.
Want me to go through anything, or you guys want to kind of kick off where you, where you left off?
Well, I will state on the, I think that the architecture looks fine. Just my, I understand, and what I love about this board is that we have five different opinions. I like that most of the time, but I like the complementary nature of the, the colors and the way the building looks and so on, myself, but I'm.
Don't, don't disagree. Concern is not the word I'm looking for, but because this, this project has multi- pad sites and multiple buildings, and because some of these are going to be flex buildings, and some of them are going to be.
Surprisingly owned.
I, I, I think it would be great for him and for us to have Chris take a look at this and maybe give us some, some boundary. So he may say, yeah, this is great, so, you know, let's, let's try to keep the color schemes in this family, or, you know, let's try to keep the roof lines, you know, below the tree line, and, and, you know, all kind of in a similar. I don't know what he's going to come up with. I, I don't think it's for us to say, but I, we have a consultant for that reason, and because we don't know what's going to come to us, I think that would maybe have some value. And I also think that we should consider asking the applicant to give us some sample monument sign designs so that we can try to get some continuity or consistency of these monument signs that are going to be in front of all these buildings. So I would like to make a, a motion to, to ask staff to, to direct the applicant to bring that information to us, and a motion to ask staff to engage our architectural consultant to give us some feedback on some parameters for this big, bigger picture of the complex.
So a review and comment, kind of an overall?
An overall, not necessarily this building. I, I like, in fact, I happen to like the gray building more than I do the, the cream and the red building.
Yep.
You know, I, like I say, I don't think it should be up to a planning board to dictate architectural flavor to an applicant, but, you know, this is a very unique site, and we've got, we don't know what's coming to us, and he doesn't know what he's going to be bringing to us, so.
Well, I think it's up to us to a certain degree.
To a certain.
But I don't think that, you know, it's, it's a within reason type thing.
Yeah.
And I understand that within reason is subjective, means different things to different people. What's everybody else feel about?
Well, you know, as far as this building lot one versus lot two, the style of the buildings is similar. The colors, the color schemes are different. I'm somewhat color challenged, so I.
They're going to look the same to you.
Well, you know, they all look pretty good to me. So, but, you know, the styles are similar, you know, it's.
So we shouldn't pay any attention to your views on.
It comes to colors, no, no.
Shapes, shapes are good.
I don't think they're anything alike, but, yeah, I just, I agree with Jim. I think we should, we have the availability of Chris to take a look at it and give us some insight along with some others, so let's take advantage of it.
Yeah, yeah, I too, I have no problem with Chris taking a look at it. You know, I think about some of the other projects where there's multiple buildings. Linden Oaks, there's a variation of architecture in that area, which I think is interesting. And we've been to projects too where the identity of the building was the number on the building. You know, 400, 600, 800, and that was, you know, I think they were two.
To Richard's point, absolutely. Don't disagree.
Was that the intentional Linden Oaks? I don't remember back there.
Yes, yes. Linden Oaks Phase 1 and 2 had a, had one architectural theme.
Okay.
And they probably had a theme of, we're not putting building mod signage on here because we're expecting tenants to change.
No developer wants to do that, because the minute that tenant leaves.
Cost, yeah.
You've got shadow lines, you've got, you know, sun baked lines, you've got holes in the building.
And I get that. I mean, having the number as the main identifier.
Is not good.
600.
Yeah.
It's easier to take it off a door.
Yeah, why?
Well, because, because I think what Bob's saying is that every building looks identical, and the only differentiation is, this is 400 and this is 600.
Okay, but, that's not what I'm saying. Well, you know, if this, you know, this is going to be an owned building by someone who wants to put their business in Penfield, which I'm grateful for. And, you know, they can have their own, to me, they should be able to have their own identity signage.
Absolutely, yeah.
And then, you know, in terms of lot one, if there's, let's say, eight lots total, or however many there's going to be, if half of them are buildings like that with slight differences, the main differentiator will be, is it 100, 300, 600, that type thing, and then.
And the monument signage.
And the monument sign that also has the number probably without too much change in tenants, names and signage.
Like, again.
And that's where having the differentiation in architecture is a good thing.
So.
Different, but complementary.
The point is to have, to have, you know, a direction, an opinion from somebody that, that looks at these kinds of things, that.
That knows what they're doing.
That knows more than we do about that, and can give us some guidance, I think that there's area there, so.
Okay, so he moved that we did that. Anybody want to second it?
Well, I captured, we're not tabling it.
Well, that's not a tabling resolution, that's a.
Yeah, I captured those items, though.
Okay, so we don't necessarily have to vote on that, or?
Eventually, once we.
No.
There's other items, I think, to talk about before we table the application.
All right. So do you want to?
You don't need to take a separate vote right now, is to answer your question, though.
Okay, so we'll incorporate that into the tabling resolution. Does that work for you guys?
Yep.
Okay.
Standard procedure. Bless you.
And we can even have the two of you, you can make the motion, you can table or second it, so that she doesn't have to scribble out her.
Rock, paper, scissors.
You good with that?
There's nothing right now. AJ's just on a run right now, it's okay.
All right, let's finish this up.
Yep. So, again, with, you got a memo from your landscape consultant, we passed that on today. It said the applicant was compliant with that, and they're willing to make the changes, as some of the species on there are now on one of those lists of trees that you shouldn't plant anymore because of disease threats, so they'll make the necessary changes. Is everyone, I know it was a long, long way to get there, but we understand what's going on with the land bank parking.
Yes.
As proposed.
Let's talk a little bit, the land bank parking.
I can give you a before and after if it helps.
The retaining wall is where the land bank parking is, as proposed, correct?
That portion, yeah. That little wing of it right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, and then the rest of that where the snow storage sign, that's land bank, and then on the west side of the building, there's also land banked right there.
Right. But if, if it comes to where they need the full 84, which doesn't sound like they ever need the full 84.
Right.
They would have, as long as we understand, they would have to encroach on the, the retaining wall. I'd have to do a lot of work right now.
They'd have to be disrupted.
Right, and.
Yeah, and the other ones.
So this is the first.
Depending on where.
Right, this is the first time we've seen it, and depending on which one gets installed, to your point, AJ, they'd have to modify the retaining wall and also cut into some of the hillside a little bit for it. We haven't seen the full package's plans yet, because this just came in part of our conversations. Where are you going?
Okay.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, here's the grading plan, the, the existing one. This is just showing it with the improvements they want to put in with this application, so you can kind of see where that grading is now, how they're tying that in to the slopes on the west side of the building, as well as on the east side, where that drainage area is that they're talking about that would have to be relocated.
Right.
Part of requirement would have to be that an easement is granted on the lot adjacent to it on its east if land bank parking were to go there to move that facility, something we offer.
One thing before you move on too far is, since this is going to be a separately-owned structure.
Yes.
That retention or bio.
Bio-retention.
Bio-retention facility, if they need to move it, they don't own the adjacent property. So there's got to be some sort of agreement upfront, easement, whatever, that gives them the ability to, to do that.
You know, that's, that's a, you bring up a very good point, because.
That was shown on the plan that we received today, a proposed easement to, for that lot, and with the town, with the town.
Yeah, so, so how much of the property is being deeded over to the building owner? Because the building owner was not the sponsor of the application that we approved for the overall site.
Yeah, but that's, that's where this is similar to a residential subdivision, that the builder comes in and says, hey, I'm going to build 50 houses, and people buy those houses.
The easement comes to us.
Except, I'm not just talking about easements, I'm talking about, you know, other improvements there. It's just, you know, if, if he does more and more of this, and more of these buildings end up getting sold, it would be helpful to know how much of the real property is being deeded over, because then we've, then in the event that we needed to invoke, you know, maintenance or something, you know, you'd want to know who you're dealing with.
Oh, yeah, so our property maintenance agreement would call out to Simutech in this example, in this case, rather than Panorama Properties LLC, because we know who the owner of the lot's going to be at this point. They know who they're selling this to, or buying the building.
In the resolution to the Panorama Park LLC, we're going to require a maintenance agreement with the building owner as well, who was not an applicant to this board?
I follow what you're saying, yeah. So I would say Panorama Properties is that, is the agent for Simutech in this?
Yeah, it's just.
We would require that whatever, like, maintenance agreements, easements, whatever documentation that we need.
Passes on to the next owner.
Yeah, is included in the owner of what it's going to be as this application.
You, you put that on, I think we didn't tell you that you, you just lost control of being able to go back, because you're relying on somebody else.
Yeah, but let's say, the same thing would hold true if.
But the town's a part of all those?
The developer sold the entire project to somebody else.
And these easements are to us to give us the right.
Isn't on the application.
Yeah, we get, by, by granting that easement to us, we have the right to, to enforce those easements regardless of who the owner is. As AJ said, when houses change over, we have a drainage easement that runs through a lot. We don't go and refile an easement because it's a new owner. We are the town of Penfield, we are an agent in that agreement. We are the ones who are granted the easement, therefore we go in and use it. So if we have an easement area in this development that's intended for bio-retention, we would allow this to go to whoever the user is contributing to it, because it's an easement to us. We don't own the land.
Yeah, but at some, at some point, when they file this, they're going to have to show the boundaries of the deeded property that they're deeding over to Simutech.
Right.
I, I just, it'd be nice to see that, that's all.
Isn't that all lot two?
Well, yeah, lot two is.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, it's the boundary, I'm assuming, we're assuming that the whole lot is going to be sold to Simutech.
Yeah, the plat map that they've provided for this application indicates that that's what's being subdivided and, and sold to Simutech, but I, I would actually like to clarify, to your point, I would like to just clarify in writing, because I don't recall it thus far in the materials, if it's just the building going to Simutech or the whole lot.
It's a valid question.
Yeah, and that's, I think, helped answer everything we just talked about.
So if, if they own the lot, and they build right up to the edge of the lot, are they still going to use?
No. There is not a setback, it's, the zoning, the setbacks apply within LI, actually, not really many setbacks, even for buildings. It's, in the LI district, your setbacks are governed by distance from zoning district boundaries.
And, and from the buildings, but this is the same.
It's goofy things. Yeah, parking doesn't have to, there's nothing to the front of the site.
And so to the immediate right of there, that's still part of the overall project?
Yeah. Yeah, this whole thing's surrounded by limited industrial.
Okay.
It's all internal to the original project. As Doug said, if you, like, he's zooming out here, that thick line about, you know, if you go to that, that one, that's the property, that's the project limits out there. Lot two is all internal of that. And that was, I, I kind of wish that they had an overall map up there for us to kind of start here. This is where we are.
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask them the same thing.
I think we're going to learn going forward from that.
And, and maybe we should ask them in the next application.
I, I agree.
To give us a mapping plan, showing us where that, the pad in question is in proximity to the overall site, so we can get our bearings.
Yeah, the cover sheet shows, I would have liked to have it up there for the, the public to see as part of the presentation.
Here, and on the, here.
Yep. So for the record, it's there, I would have liked to see it as part of the presentation, but that's technicalities at this point. What else did I have? So just revisiting the land baking parking, because I, I think that was a critical issue here. Are you comfortable with this layout? Again, we're going to see a revised plan that shows any changes in grading that's necessary, but.
I am.
Are you comfortable with this layout?
I'm comfortable with it.
Originally, they talked about going into the hillside more, which I think really defeated the purpose of what this board's intent was for the overall project. This is a big improvement.
They got 24 employees.
They do.
Yeah, they're, they're owning the building, it's not, it's not a rental or a leased thing that's going to change tenants.
Historically, Zach, how many times do we see applicants come back and, and needing to expand their parking and actually construct?
Under the same ownership, very rarely. It's usually when it changes ownership that someone says, I, I need. It's usually when it changes ownership that someone says, I need.
It's a change in use or a change in density.
Yeah, to execute the land bank parking and build another 20 spots.
And it's nice, in this case, you have options for that, you know, you can go east, you can go west. Something I did offer to the applicant during my conversations with them prior to the meeting is that, you know, they may consider building the bio retention area all at once further to the east so that if that land bank parking gets installed over there.
They don't have all that extra work to do.
You're not moving the bio retention area and its associated utilities, like pipes and things that are leading to it, moving it to the next spot over and disturbing what pavement is there off the building. So I, they're still working on that. I offered that as more of a cost saving and convenience to them so that when it comes in, all they're doing is installing parking and going and moving the grass out of the way. So we may be seeing that in the future at our next meeting. If not, again, they've offered that easement to allow the bio retention to go there. All right, so I have those items to go forward with. Make sure that we capture dimmable features, I assume you want that like we did with lot one.
Yep.
Dimmable lighting features for that. We'll get the signage detail, we'll get input from our architectural consultant on kind of what's been seen so far and what's being presented and try to, like you said Jim, kind of, kind of set a standard. And anything else you guys have on this? With no, with no area variances at this time, would you like to start drafting an approval?
Yes. I would say yes. All right, so the, I believe the motion is on the.
Table pending everything we talked about.
Table. Incorporating everything that we've just discussed.
Accurate.
Okay, so it was Burton, Canower.
Good memory.
Heskey.
Hi.
Ashton.
Hi.
Burton.
Hi.
Canower.
Hi.
Tatum.
Hi.
Okay.
All right. Just like Steve said, Empire Boulevard.
All right, so yeah, let's start here. Thank you, Doug. This is your existing condition out there from the aerial maps. We just received the written responses to the PRC memo today. We have not received the revised site plans yet. I think staff needs some time to review that. There's some comments out there from county planning and from the DOT regarding what's been proposed thus far. They haven't had a chance to see this. The curb cuts are our staff's primary concern.
So I'm just playing devil's advocate here.
Go for it.
You own a piece of property, you spent money on it in, you know, Empire Boulevard, and it has three curb cuts. Curb cuts are like gold to an owner, right?
Yep.
So now you're being asked to remove them at a significant expense. Why would you, I mean, to me, it's like extortion or something.
I try not to look at it from that way. I look at it from a safety perspective.
I don't know what you had for lunch.
I just, well, you know, it's the DOT, the DOT controls that.
But they're the own three.
It's entirely up to them, so they're reviewing this application along with us.
Those, those curb cuts. The thing with those existing curb cuts is they are informal at best. They were gravel for the longest period of time. As you can see, they were never formally paved, never really defined. It was someone's little quick access loop to, it looks like a stone dust path that led to that house for a period of time. The driveway to the left, which is actually on this property, services that house in the back more. And as part of this application, the developer's proposing to widen that driveway to give you two-way access to the proposed parking in the rear because right now that can't accommodate two-way traffic.
So they're, they're going to allow the neighbor to use their driveway?
Yes. I believe there's a filed easement already in place.
So they already have a legal right to use the driveway?
The neighbor to the south, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Just going back to your point about the curb cuts, you know, we've always had a practice to try and minimize those as much as we can. We know Empire Boulevard is Empire Boulevard. Especially in that location. Offering two more points of conflict is not great. Now, most people will be going facing out, out of there, but I imagine some guy who's trying to plow it, who's going to be backing into Empire Boulevard a dozen times to clean out those sites when it's wintry seasons.
It's a dangerous area anyhow.
Yeah, I don't.
People come whipping out of there from Webster, going down the hill.
590 is apparently Daytona 500. So I understand what you're saying. We've seen this from a safety aspect and minimizing curb cuts when possible, when they already have a legal means of access that's more formalized at the driveway entrance on their property than the informal stone that's been laid over, over time.
What would they like to see happen with that?
Who's the area?
The applicant.
The applicant? Well, they're proposing to keep it paved, to keep that access out there because right now their, their responses are phrased in a way as such that we're not proposing improvements in the DOT's right of way, therefore we are just doing improvements on our property based on those existing conditions out at the road. So as you can see.
Probably because the expense, well, the expense involved in permits.
There's a permit process, that's all, it's more time sensitive than cost.
The DOT right of way.
Yeah.
Right.
It's more of a time thing than a cost because the DOT does often take time to get an answer for stuff like that.
So I guess to AJ's point, if, if it already exists, the DOT can't deny them the use of ingress that they already have.
Not of the one.
The improvements that they're making are back into the site.
Not of the one, but the DOT has put a comment in writing in the, in the DRC comments to say that, that gravel area should be removed with this application.
Should be or shall be.
Should.
So.
I know. Very, very different word. It's a very different word, I agree with you. What I would like is more formal correspondence from the DOT on this matter.
So let them drive it and we don't have to.
It is their road and that's.
We don't have to get involved.
It's not our jurisdiction. They have to provide a, they have to provide a curb cut somewhere that is rated for a commercial use as the tutoring center is. It's an LB property, it was formerly used as residential, they're turning it into professional use. They have to provide a curb cut that meets that. I don't believe we've seen anything that says, yes, your curb cut is compliant. Just because you're not disturbing it doesn't mean it's not compliant. I think there needs to be more direction from the DOT on this period, given the unique circumstances that are out there. Because I don't want to put this board or our staff in a situation of who the hell approved that. So that's something I'd like to avoid with this project. Also getting details on number of employees and students, as you said Terry.
Yeah.
I think that's going to factor into.
They have a lot of information.
Yes.
Poor guy, well, he was expecting the.
Yes. Yeah, the owner was not present, that did make that public hearing a little more difficult, but we can ask all these questions.
Yeah. We can get them all answered.
Hopefully time will show up next time and.
Well, we need them in writing at this point.
Yeah, writing, fine, yeah, so we're ready to.
Yeah.
Need a motion to send up table.
I have one question though, at the bottom of the comment.
Too late.
Do you gender the comment?
Yikes.
It's also an county's email to us, they stated they have disagreed with the project.
Yes.
And an official letter is to follow. What does that mean?
With regards to, with regards to drainage, the county had a uniquely alarming concern, uniquely in the fact that we don't typically see it, that drainage discharge was flowing onto, I believe it's county land.
Yes.
County land, which directly leads into around Equine Bay. Their, basically their comments recommended that the, the point discharge is taken back further from the property line. However, in their message to us in an email, it said, we are denying this project from our review process. And I've been baffled by that for a little bit, to be completely honest. So we're seeking clarification on that. We, we put that, we, the applicant's aware of that. I wanted to make sure that the applicant has also passed along their responses to the county. We're going to follow up with the county and see where they were going with that. Because if it's a simple matter, if it's a simple matter of modifying a drainage design, then that can easily be accommodated.
But it has nothing to do with the curb cuts?
Does not. Their comment was regarding to drainage. Because again, state road, county shouldn't be weighing it on that. But good question, so.
Do we have a second?
Should we table it?
I have a table from Terry.
Somebody second?
I'll second.
You guys usually want to get your name in the minutes.
Heskey.
Hi.
Ashton.
Hi.
Burton.
Hi.
Canower.
Hi.
Tatum.
Hi.
With that being said, nothing else.
That's it? Okay, folks.
Let's take a motion to close it, I'm kidding, don't do that.
Without further, this is before us, we'll adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Nice work.